Good evening, everyone. The Look Here Community Board of Education meeting is now called order. We will begin with the Fledge of Allegiance. Mrs. McCann, would you please say this for the flag?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. McCann. So that brings us to our presenting school proceedings. So I'll turn over to you, Superintendent.
Madam President, it is my pleasure to introduce Mr. Wyatt Stevens, Principal of Old Warner, to discuss Goal One, Strategy 1.3. Mr. Stevens, the floor is yours.
Thank you. You know, before we even get into it, I labeled that last night. And like one of those surreal moments, where it's one of those, I guess, one of the moments. I got thinking about Goal One or Six, I've been up here in prison, but I've heard that for a long time. This is the last time that you have your presentation on Goal One or Six.
Wow.
Ah, sage Mr. Stevens.
What an accomplishment of the district. Honestly, moved to a new place.
Honestly, it is super exciting looking forward to that. I think it's kudos to everything that's going on here as well. I think it's kudos to the board, Michelle, Matt, claiming this on out. I've had the pleasure to go to conferences around the state and listen to people present that, that present new ideas. And it always comes back, sometimes I'm sitting in a session, I've been doing that over here, I've been doing it for ten years, DLCs, etc. So it's exciting. I'm excited for the five, six. It is that little awe moment about six, seven though, because I know a lot of us sitting here put a lot of our heart into the six, seven building. And it's been a great place. But kudos to our staff too, because they're moving it forward still, even though with that little bit of hesitancy, right? Change, whenever there's change, there's some hesitancy. And we're still moving the needle forward, so. Without further ado, I'm not gonna go through all the forward goals with you and that kids understand that we have a big one for all of our district goals, right? Everything that we put forward here can fall underneath those district goals, our building goals and then. Again, kudos to Michelle bringing in Jenny Donahue. We're gonna talk about assessment capable orders, moving all of that work forward. So just, I think this is a great time to just, again, further kudos back to the staff. We have great learning coaches at our building that keep on moving this forward for us. So rather than listening to me anymore about my all moments of six, seven campus, Mrs. Parks is gonna explain what are assessment capable orders.
Okay, so, to simplify this, the image on the right of the screen really gives you, it's very encouraging, but, it gives us the basic thing. So what do we want our students to actually do? What is an assessment capable order? It's where a kiddo can actually identify where they really are with the knowledge in class, or what lesson is it today? Or what standard am I working on? And the kiddo can actually identify themselves. Here's where I am, but over here is where I need to be. So how do I, me personally, get from my point A to my end point over here? You know, and kids are gonna be in different spots. So we have some kids that might be, you know, functioning with just tier one support. And they're very good at knowing how to bridge that gap. How do they study? How do they learn? We have some other kiddos that are more our type tier three learners. And it might take them a little bit longer to figure out realistically, where I really have with this material? Where do I need to be? Same place as all the other kids. But what's it gonna take me to get there? So that's what we're trying to build in our building. It's kind of, it's kind of two part. Helping the kids actually understand where they really are in relation to the success criteria. And then what do they personally need to do? What strategies? How do they study? What supports do they personally need to get to that next step? And then eventually, hopefully, we can get to that implementation process as well. So the next slide is gonna kind of describe why we chose this and why we think it's gonna have such a big impact. So what you're looking up there at is actually a visible learning barometer. And this is coming from John Hattie. And if you're not familiar with the entire, you know, educational background, Hattie is an educational researcher. And he's very well known for his focus on visible learning. And what he does is, to sum it up, he ranks different factors of learning and then are in schools and the kids are asked to do, including how the teachers are working with kids, things about homeworks. And basically, they, they try to find the most significant impacts on student learning. And you can kind of see the star up there next to the zero point four. They're certainly the hinge point that we look for as educational leaders to make sure that we're utilizing anything above that hinge point of the point four. Because at eight point four, let's see if I can clip this up, we'll get some more. There we go. The point four effect size, what that really means is that you're getting a full year's worth of learning over that one year's school period. Anything below that hinge point, it's not really getting a full year's worth out of what you're doing. So when we were looking at assessment capable learners, there's like a dash line, you can see at the very bottom of the chart, assessment capable learners actually has this effect size of one point four four. So almost triple what you get instead of one full year. You're almost getting three full years out of that year's worth of learning if we can get our kids to this actual point. So again, what we're trying to do is we are trying to hit that maximum effect size of one point four four within our students by helping them learn how to become assessment capable learners. So helping them learn again, where am I at? That's where I need to be. How do I get there? So with that, we're hoping that we have some added effects. So we're hoping to build this confidence within our kiddos. And when we build this confidence, we expect that we're also going to see their motivation increase as well as their achievement growth. We'll hand it over to just Andrea Kane, one of our wonderful learners.
All right, thank you. All right, so how does that impact our instruction? So ultimately, what we're doing is having or teaching kids to be partners in their own learning. Not just passive, sort of sitting back and just wondering like, how did I do on this? Could you grade my paper? But actually, helping kids to know what learning goals there are, like making it very clear with them. And then teaching them how to use success criteria to measure their learning. And so we do that by developing rubrics, using mentor texts and progressions, work samples. And that way, they can look at the goal and then actually decide where they are along that way. We also wanna make sure that the learning activities in the classroom actually align to that learning goal. And, you know, I think all of us probably had similar education way back in the day where we weren't really clear on why we were doing something. Like if you ask, hey, what do you learn today? Math? That's not specific enough. Like, we're specifically learning this thing and this is how you're gonna measure it. Or maybe you would do a paper and then just not really know what the grade is gonna be and you turn it in and then you'd be surprised by the marks that you got on it. Well, that's, that's not how we're doing things anymore. So the other part of that is when we use assessment capable learner strategies in the classroom, we also need to make it so that students have the opportunity to revise their learning. So we're not just moving on to the next lesson. We're actually having them decide like, oh, I don't know this yet. Okay, well then I need to do some reteaching with you. Or there's some strategies or some other activity that needs to do with you. Or I do know it. Okay, well, let's do some extension activities so everybody keeps learning in the classroom. So how does this impact our planning? So actually, the school board goal was about quality as curriculum. So we're talking a lot about instructional practices right now, but it really to do this takes a lot of work with curriculum. So I'm not gonna read all those parts. But we have a lot of really great programs that we've purchased in the last few years, but no program that we've purchased really has all these perks to it. It might have many pieces, but even that, you really have to work in your teams and partnerships to look through and find rubrics, revise the rubrics, look at learning progressions, look at the assessments, align all of your, making sure your learning targets align to standards. So how do we do all that work? I mean, teachers do take a lot of work home, but this really has to be a collaborative process. So we do that through weekly professional learning communities, or sorry, professional learning community meetings, data days, and then curriculum on packet meetings. So I'm gonna give you a couple of examples, because I feel like that's what the board really likes to see the stuff kids do. So, and probably the community as well. But this is an E L A example. So this teacher had been teaching students to use textual evidence and to support theme theory. So a theme theory just is kind of the underlying meaning in a story. So they've been working on it a lot. At the bottom, it is a rubric that she created for success criteria. So this is how the kids are gonna measure themselves. So they've had lots of practice. Now it's their turn to like do it on their own. And so one of the students, this is what he, something like this is what his paper looked like. And one of his time for him to evaluate his own work, he marked himself here. And so I'm like kind of standing back and I wanted to jump in, but I knew she was gonna have the students turn and like justify, give each other peer feedback on what they put. So like his, his shoulder partner looked at it very skeptically. It was like, um, why did you, why did you put achieving? And he said, well, I mean, highlighted throughout. He's like, okay. And then he pointed out what he's like, how does that support the theme theory? And he was like, okay, not that one. I was like, how about that one? And he's like, no. And he's like, okay, fine. So it's really emerging. I'm emerging right now. And he's like, okay, you are. So then he gave him her feedback. So you have to make sure all the evidence that you underline only supports the theme theory. And then it doesn't stop there. So, you know, the teacher is listening and going around and then you have to decide, okay, was this text too hard for the student? Was the task too hard? Or was he maybe trying to just scroll off some work and like put it aside? And so she came to find out that he just thought maybe he could slide that one through. But now, it's not that just, we're not just teaching kids to assess themselves, but they're actually giving each other feedback. So there's like maybe thirty kids in a room and now they have feedback partners. So, so now they can't just sneak in something. They're really getting a lot of feedback along the way. Here's a social studies example. So this teacher was, this kind of group was having some trouble with sixth graders starting to study. The tasks were pretty hard and they were struggling. So we decided to try like a study plan and teach them how to use study skills. So they had a review guide. They corrected it in class and then they had them make little flashcards for every single question in class. And then the kids did all their flashcards by themselves. Then they worked in partners. And then they marked whether they were right or wrong each time on each particular flashcard. And then after that, they made a little like study plan for the night that they could take home to their parents or with their family or for themselves. And then after the test, they did a reflection based on their score to kind of think about, how did I do this last little unit? What practices did I use? How responsible was I in class? And they made a little plan for coming up next. So I'm gonna be honest, the first time, there wasn't a huge dramatic increase in their tests and it was very disheartening. We're like, I don't really thought this was gonna knock them over the edge. But in subsequent tests, it got better. And then on the final exam, there was like an eighty-seven percent proficiency rate, which is really high for a final exam. So that was exciting. It like, it worked. And, and there were rubrics too, this wasn't the only thing. It was that easy then. Not everyone could do this. But it, I mean, it was a big jump. And then this is a coding example. So this one blows my mind. So on the bottom, you can see an example of a website that the kids are coding. It's not like, I'm really good at Google sites, right? I can just put a little picture here and add it there. But these kids are actually doing the backend of coding. Like the stuff that none of us see, that's what they're doing here. So that's the example they had. At the top, you can see the success criteria and checklist. And like, it's kind of dark, but the kids went through and highlighted the parts they felt were really important. And then on the left, this, this was like multiple review sessions they did with peers. But in the middle, they have success criteria and there's very specific feedback on there. Like stuff that I didn't even understand, where they're correcting parts of the code. And it totally blew my mind. So, yeah, there, there are people using this in our building. It's kind of our, at the beginning of this, we had this goal for a while, but we've been adapting other ones. But this is like really getting us to a better place of grading, which is a long-term goal for our district. So, so I'm gonna now pass it on to Darnley. So she can talk about all the awesome things she's doing with math.
Hi. So I spend a majority of my time working with math teachers and students with math. So I'm gonna share our math story with assessment capable learners. So in the fall, we did a PD with Steve Stewart and one of the focuses was a formative assessment feedback as well as learning targets and success criteria. And one of the things that we talked about was providing graphics versus words. And so some of our math team kind of took that and ran. And you see on the left, they, we have our learning targets of what the kids needed to know for the lesson. And then they created an image of it so the kids could see actually examples of what it would look like, kind of like the exemplars. And then they kind of tweaked it and said, okay, well, what if we switch it and we use graphics for our learning target? So the kids know that this is what we're learning today, but they also then have an opportunity to relate it to being able to pull out things that they already know. So they're not thinking like, okay, this is all new and I have no entry points for what we're doing for today. So from there, so last year, we piloted in Visions. And in our pilot, we decided that we needed to assess students on where they are before they started their units, but more so, they needed to have an understanding of where they were with their learning before they were starting a new topic. So they have a review what you know. And so what the kids did is, and it's not really long, it's like maybe ten to twelve questions. And we have I X L. And so what was created was a checklist with a review what you know. And the kids completed it at the beginning of the unit and then they self-check it. And then they also have a sheet that's, that's on the same checklist they have linked with I X L codes that they can use from skills that they were previously taught in fifth grade or fourth grade, that they can go back that same day and kind of practice. Or even if they want to on their own, they can practice. So they, if they're kind of, you know, they kind of forgot or they're kind of behind on some of the skills they need for what they're gonna learn, getting ready to work, then they have a way to access that information and kind of refresh their memory on their own. And with that, we then decided, okay, well, how can students self-assess before they're getting ready to take a unit or a topic test, right? So we give a lot of contents, give kids reviews. And, you know, and we tell the kids, of course, like, okay, well, if you can do the problems on the review, then you're gonna be successful on the test. And so we think it's that easy, but it's not always that easy, right? Because the kids don't always, they might not complete all the review or let's say they complete all the review and they can't do all the problems on the test. Then they're like, well, now what? So our math team decided, okay, so we created a study guide. And a study guide had, let's say, problems one through ten and one through ten A. And so the kids in class, they start working through those problems, one through ten A. And then after a certain amount of time, together as a class, they go over those problems. And then the kids stop and they assess themselves where they are. Did you do those problems on your own? Did you do those problems with help of a partner? Or did you have no idea and you don't have them yet? So then they talk about, okay, now that you've assessed, and the importance is that you have to be honest, because now, once you've done that, you now have another set of problems that are similar to the ones that you just did. So if you're at a spot where you got it and you did it all on your own, those are problems, then you don't need to practice, because you're good to go. And so when you go to take your assessment, you're gonna be all set. But if you were in an area of, on one of those skills that you needed help with a partner, then that might be a skill then that you need to go to I X L or you need to seek individual help with a teacher. And so then you can see up there, like the last column, then has all the codes that are also linked to additional practice. Again, just another way for the kids to really kind of self-assess and beyond identifying where they are with the understanding before they take a topic test. But now here are some things that you can do if you're not quite there and you need a little bit more practice. So from there, we, obviously, we're always looking at data, right? So we look at our N W A data, we look at our M step data, and we decide, okay, well, we have these kids that are, when they take the N W A, we decide we need them part of the goal setting process, right? It's a, it's a benchmark test, but it needs to be more than just a benchmark, our benchmark test. It needs to have meaning. So they created this goal sheet that the kids use and they take their test in the fall, they write down their score. And then from there, they get a printout of their data from the fall test and they identify their two weaknesses. Then that goes in to their lab book, their math lab book. And it has, you can see on the left, those are all different areas that they can work on for their two weaknesses. And then they have their goal of what they need to make in the spring. And then they take it in the winter. Like this particular student in the fall, who was a two twenty-one and his goal for spring was a two twenty-nine. And when he just took the winter test, he had a two thirty, right? So they're not, that doesn't mean that he's done, right? But that means like, okay, well, so now let's see if your two areas that were weaknesses in the fall, let's see if now those have adjusted. And now in the winter, if you've got, you know, two new areas of weakness and now you can do the same thing and, you know, just continue to improve. So with that, we also created, we also identified that we have kids that are just on the cusp of proficiency. So looking at the data, we identified where kids need to be in order for them to be proficient in the spring when they take their M step. And we learned that there's a lot of kids that fall into this range that are really good students and do everything that, that we ask them to do and work really hard in the classroom. And those, a lot of times, are our students that, at the end of the year, when they take the M step or the standardized assessment, we notice are just below the mark. So we decided, okay, let's create an M T S S for math during the I connect. So we created groups. Last year, we did it. Some teachers were able to sustain it through the year and they had really good results. They were incredibly excited by what they saw and it was making an impact. So this year, at the beginning of the year, we talked about, how can we make this sustainable for all of us to be able to do for the year? And from there, we said, okay, well, we need to make it more competitively because the I connect time is a half an hour, that the kids are gonna be pulled out of their I connect group and they'll stay, you know, they'll come for math work for two weeks and then we'll rotate groups. And so from there, the team created games and then they assess themselves that, you know, if they get it right, then they get to go put their name on, you know, a math lotto or they get to take a basket and they keep points. They've got a score sheet that, you know, they get points for being on time for remembering without having to be reminded for participating during the I connect time. And then, you know, at the end of the week, you know, they tally their points and students with the, with the most points get some sort of treat. Now, we've also, the, the teachers give that treat during the regular math time. So the kids are like, well, wait a minute, where did you get that? And then they say, oh, well, that was I connect. So then if they're one of the kids that are pulled for I connect another time, then that kind of incentivizes them rather than saying, well, I don't wanna go for, you know, I don't wanna miss I connect. But, and then lastly, I guess, the most important part is, right, is really looking at the data to see if what we're doing is having an impact. And I think that this is the most exciting part for us is that we finally have identified that there's things that we're doing that really are making an impact in the student growth. And that kind of makes us excited to keep going and keep moving. So these are just some snapshots. You know, we had one class in, from fall to winter, you know, that there eighty-seven and a half percent of students met or exceeded their growth. Another seventy-seven percent. And, and that's pretty consistent among all of them, which is exciting. We had a day-to-day just a couple of weeks ago. And in the day-to-day, the student, or the teachers really noticed that, you know, one of, one of them, as they were looking at the data, said, hey, I had twenty-two out of my twenty-six kids that were part of that I connect group that I pulled, that they are on track in their, you know, their winter proficiency part for this year. We had thirty out of forty-four that advanced the proficiency checkpoint. And they were, and those are kids that were starting from below level in the fall. So again, you know, it, it just kind of reinforces. It's always good when you can reinforce in, in you with the data that things that we're doing are having an impact. And, and we're constantly having a conversation of, how do we get the kids involved, rather than it just being a thing that the kids are doing? But we want them to know and understand where they are and have incentive to keep growing as learners.
So by no means are we standing here saying that we are the experts of this, all right? But there's a little bit of proof in that pudding right there when you look at those numbers. And I'm gonna go back to this one slide and say, if you ever wanna see fun in a sixth grade math classroom, come on in, go there, play dirtball. If I can guarantee you, it's most indeed, you will see those kids. With me saying that, thank you, team. Thank you, board. Appreciate you guys.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
I think I have a comment. I love the note card idea. I'm a nerd that used to use note cards back in school. And I love that you're implementing that. I have tried umpteen zillion times with my kids to do note cards. And I know that they work, but my kids just don't think they do. But, but I'm not worried about theirs. But I think that it's awesome that you guys are implementing them. And I love how the self-assessment helps them own their learning. They are owning it and they are being honest. When they, you know, when they, I need help or, oh, apparently I didn't have that. I love how you're using the partner aspect of, you know, buddy, you did not do that right. I mean, I just think that that is fantastic, because it calls them out on it. And it just helps them to be encouraged. And again, it just promotes that whole, this is my, this is my learning education. Do I wanna continue? Do I wanna improve? I just, I love all that you shared with us today. So thank you guys very much. Wonderful job.
Anyone else have a question?
I mean, of course, thank you very much. What I can say is how impressive you guys are packing so much in for growth out of these students, right? And everything that you're utilizing is only gonna help them as any kind of adults in the world when they grow up and do whatever their heart desires, right? Every single thing from making them the collaborative approach in their own learning experience, right? Having them self-assess themselves. And having them put their own goals out there for testing. And having them understand the correlation of why are they learning? Why do they need to take these self-assessment tests? The importance of them, right? I mean, all that, jam-packed. I mean, what you just described, I'm like, where do they have time to fit all of that in? But it's super impressive in just seeing the results that they can. I gotta say, from a student, I was a good student, but I was not a good standardized test taker. And I think some of the things that you guys are implementing, definitely, I can see what helped me as a student achieve better scores on those tests, right? So I, I'm just impressed that our kids are getting such a learning experience they are. It's such a impactful years as six, seven, right? So I think that's amazing. So appreciate all the efforts, because I know that isn't easy. Appreciate that. You guys have been great, John. Okay, thank you very much. So with that, we will then head into our public comment for this evening. We do have one comment card. So I will read, "A board meeting is a meeting of school district business held in public. It's not a public meeting. The board is now going to respond to this meeting in public comment, but will direct the superintendent to follow the presenter. Thirty minutes is set aside for public comment, so each presenter is being asked to keep their comments brief. The board does not comment in public on any student or employee and asks the presenter to be respectful of any person they come upon." Karen, appreciate y'all. Karen, appreciate it all.
Hello, so I usually just come to you once a year in June to remind you about litter cleanup after the Fourth of July fireworks. But I'm here today, I would much rather be at home, because you didn't even know it was my email that I sent you, because I didn't make it for the last meeting. I thought you needed to know what I witnessed on December fifth in Metamora with the, I sent an email to each of you. Um, so the Murphy second graders were invited by my local fire department, and then more township fire department, to caroling and singing at the tree lighting. Now, I get that this was a community event, this wasn't a school event, but the, the invitation was out there, and it was out there with the Murphy name on it. Um, and this was shared on the school website feed and on the Facebook page. So you do have some sort of goal. And I don't consider anyone here to have meant any harm by having their goal. You simply cannot go to know what goes on in every community, and certainly not mine. But I, I needed to bring it to your attention, and I came to make sure that you know this. I would not have anything to do with events hosted by the village of Metamora or Metamora Township or any other departments. And why is in that email? So I was just heading out of my house, and I got stopped by this procession coming down my street. And it was all caught on my dash cam. I run a dash cam because the police kept telling me I wasn't seeing what I was seeing. Underage drivers, all sorts of mayhem going on. So that's why I run a dash cam all the time. And on this procession, so you've got the fire truck coming down the street, this was December fifth, this was a snow day, there was ice and snow all over these streets. There's a fire truck, there's a bunch of children, little children, second graders, walking, and adults, and then there are five UTVs behind it. And you may not notice, they're very common around here, UTVs are not safe for children. The manufacturers want them banned from roads. This, the, the township UTV was in a procession with little kids in it, um, setting a terrible example for the community. Little kids are not supposed to be in UTVs, they're supposed to, everyone inside is supposed to wear a helmet. And they were in icy streets, you're not supposed to reach your home haven at all. And so that's why I thought you needed to know that. It's five points of negligence. And when I brought this up to Don Brady, our fire chief, who I brought this up too many times before, he said it was because it was a cold day. He said it wasn't a snow day, it was a cold day, that's why schools canceled that day. So he lied. He has, he has said in the past that the morning labels on these vehicles are simply recommendations from manufacturers. That is not true, the manufacturers want them banned from roads. And so what I'm trying to establish here is, please don't accept invitations from them, because we don't have a basic level of safety in Metamora where I live. Otherwise, of course, I would welcome everyone to come. But they are not, we have events, he didn't even register this event with the village, which he should have done, by law, he should have done. Um, so it's just, we do not have a basic level of safety, so just please be aware of that. And I personally wouldn't have Don Brady in the schools teaching a fire class based on what I've seen and heard from him at meetings. Um, so I hope you take that under advisement, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I think that concludes our public comment for this evening. We will head into our reports. Our first one is finance and ops. Dr. Novak, would you please share us the report?
Yes, um, on January twenty-fourth, we met eleven a.m. via Zoom. Um, it was Craig Watson, Summer Putnam, and myself. Um, others attending, Matt Wondery, Erica Ingles, Mark Brader, Brian Bader, and Julia Cruzby, John Gordon Mallow. Meeting, again, was called to order, we discussed bid pack number six, past additions and renovations, fire suppression. Barton Mallow recommends the following for bid package number six. Addition and renovations, fire suppression to Great Lake Fire Protection Incorporated for an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars, including bid alternate A1 locker room renovations for an amount not to exceed two thousand five hundred eighty dollars. Voluntary alternate one add zone sectional values for an amount not to exceed sixty-nine thousand three hundred ninety dollars. Voluntary alternate two stand place or stage for an amount not to exceed forty-five thousand three hundred ninety dollars. And voluntary alternate number four, hydraulic calculations for building for an amount not to exceed ninety-three thousand eight hundred forty-five dollars for grand total award amount not to exceed five hundred and eleven thousand nine hundred ninety dollars. We also discussed bond change orders, number twenty-one, which is miscellaneous extras. Barton Mallow recommends the issuance of a change order for seventeen miscellaneous extras for grand total award amount not to exceed thirty-one thousand five hundred and six dollars and seventy-six cents. Uh, this is for informational purposes, and does not require board action, as individual items are not over the threshold amount. And then, uh, number twenty-two, bid pack number six, LHS temperature controls. Barton Mallow recommends the issuance of a change order, tri-city controls, to provide and install additional temperature controls at LHS in the amount not to exceed one hundred forty-one thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars. Uh, this change includes temperature controls on thirty-two pieces of H deck equipment. The graphic interface for the district to view and make modifications to the equipment and warranty. The reason for this change is because it was more cost-effective and provides consistency for temperature controls throughout the district by not including this with the rest of the bid package number six. It was a consensus of the committee to recommend full board approval on bid pack number six and change order number twenty-two at the board board at this meeting. The meeting adjourned at eleven twenty-six a.m.
Um, any comments or questions? Okay, thank you, Dr. Novak. Uh, next, we have, um, teaching learning and technology. Mrs. Hobart, would you please share us the report?
Yes, I will, thank you. We met on January twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, at three thirty p.m. via Zoom. It was myself, Summer Putnam, and John Green Wagner. Others attending were Matt Wondery, Michelle Bradford, Jenny Mudge, and Mary Moss. Meeting was called to order at three thirty. We discussed the PD advisory committee. Michelle Bradford reviewed flexibility provided in pupil accounting roles, rules, which allows districts to use district-provided professional development hours to count as days and hours of pupil instruction. In order to utilize this flexibility, pupil accounting regulations require a district-wide professional development advisory committee appointed by the board. Specifically, the advisory committee must recommend at least eight hours of professional development be used for instructional hours and be composed of various members of the school community. Michelle Bradford chaired the board-appointed committee members, which must be composed of teachers employed by the district who represent a variety of grades and subject matter specializations, including special education, non-teaching staff, parents, and administrators, with the majority of the membership of the committee being composed of teaching staff. The board committee unanimously supported the committee membership as presented. The sixth, we also discussed the sixth twelve grading timeline. As referenced in the weekender from January third, in order to improve grading practices, the district is continuing to work with Eric Foster, teacher and consultant for healthy grading practices. The established committee will continue to meet monthly to debrief and develop criteria for future implementation of standard-based grading. We discussed the updated grant information. Grant supervisor Jenny Mudge reviewed the updated state and federal grants with the committee. She explained our current grant, thirty-one AA, twenty-three G, sixty-seven F, thirty-five J, thirty-one A, Title I, II, IV, thirty-five A, ninety-nine H, and Section forty-one. The status on each one and what the funds will be used for. Lastly, we had a field trip request. The committee reviewed the following field trip request. LHS Key Club to travel to Lansing, Michigan on February twenty-first to twenty-third of this year. The committee is recommending this trip be approved by the full board at tonight's meeting. We adjourned at four ten p.m.
Any questions or concerns? Thank you, Mrs. Hobart. So that will conclude our reports for this evening. So we will start with our budget development presentations.
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, I would like to introduce our Director, Finance, Mrs. Eric Ingles. Share with us budget development number one updates.
All right, favorite time of the month.
Board meeting time?
Right, budgets. 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 I'm sure you're thrilled.
Because you have so many great ideas.
I, my head has been doing this all week, and last week, and it just keeps getting better. Um, so tonight, we're going to take a look at the budget development process, where we are today, what we're going to look at for forecast, enrollment update, um, take a look at where we stand for revenues and expenses in, uh, our general fund, our balance sheets, on the school aid fund. So where we're at, we're sitting in, obviously, February, but I wanted to take a step back and look, see what happened for new board members, everyone in the audience. So January, we started the governor's state of state address. Um, but I don't want to lose focus on, this year, we have five collective opening, um, or bargaining contracts that are septic, fired. Those are our teachers, the LEA, our principals, LSDA, our bus drivers, LTA, ass meers, our custodians, and our mechanics group. Our goal is to hope to, um, get these completed by June thirty. So February, today, we got a little insight on the governor's proposed budget. She released that today. Um, and then our first budget managers' meeting is set for February sixth. Taking a look at next month, in, in April, we are going to start working through the budget. And then hopes that the House and Senate will start crafting the original versions of the budget. April, we're going to present the preliminary forecast to the board. May will have a second budget managers' meeting, that meeting's on May twenty-first. We'll review preliminary budget, but any new information from the legislature, and follow the May revenue conference, and prepare a budget recommended to adopt. In June, local and special board meeting on June twenty-fifth, and the board will adapt the recommended budget. Kind of where we are today globally, we're going to take a look at global, what's happening globally, take a look at states. So, global, there's a lot of things changing right now. Um, very rapid fires, we're trying our best to keep up. But what we know today is US economy is expected to grow a little bit slower in twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-four. Unemployment rates will rise slightly over forecast, but they're still remaining historical, historically low. Inflation remains elevated, but is slowly expected to level up. Recession expectation is expected to be lower over the next six to twelve months. As we learned recently, global tensions will continue. We all know that Canada, Mexico, um, tariffs were instituted, uh, February first, but then were paused for about a month, where China still goes into effect. Federal Reserve, um, paused the interest rates. This is the first meeting since July without a call. So we're going to hold steady on interest rates. Yeah, these are just global variables, just kind of want to lay it out there, lay the groundwork. So what happens at a state level? So currently, our economy is still tracking with national economy. Employment growth's still steadily slowing, and unemployment rate is slowly rising. Our school aid fund, which we revert to as SAF, is projected to maintain a slight increase, about two to two and a half percent growing per year. So that's, that's somewhat good news. Um, but can also be affected by any of the trades with tariffs, many tax reforms, um, that will impact the forecast. I'll give a little bit of example, last, last week, I believe, um, we were all kind of panicked that, you know, the first article comes out, it's twenty-five, twenty, and we're like, what does that mean? So, you know, Michelle and I, and Jenny were all on webinars and trying to figure out, I mean, things are changing so rapidly. Within twenty-four hours, everything was resistant. We're like, well, that was a lot of work, but, you know, that's the stuff that we are constantly monitoring, day by day, hour by hour, and it's changing so fast. I think so.
Well, and it's also important that you can mind that as, you know, you're walking into administration, right? Who's going to make immediate impacts from a financial perspective, both locally, geographically, near locally? So there's a lot of traction in the media, especially about what is your reaction to this, right? So, I think you're characterizing well, we're, we're trying to connect with, you know, our representative organizations in Lansing, in Washington, our district legal counsel that, that can generate, um, talking points or some guidance for us to say, you know, we haven't had time to distill what the impact of this announcement, this change might be, but our phones ran off, a lot of folks are on Facebook, we're getting inquiries. Uh, and so, to Eric's point, if the third or fourth time in the last, let's say, three weeks, where, beginning of the day, we're researching the impact on up here committee schools, and by the end of the day, it's like, yeah, never mind. So that represents kind of a lost soft cost, if you will. These people are busy folks, we're trying to solve, you know, this jam-packed schedule from now until June. Uh, there's a lot of work to be done, and any diversion from that to prepare for some sort of communication or reaction um, represents time away from the tasks that are, that are under pressure. So it's just important, from the community's perspective, to, to understand and appreciate that, and also to the board, uh, that, and this is not uncommon. It's not uncommon that, you know, when the new governor takes over, or the legislature flips control, or it's a presidential election here. Um, these are very typically times of turmoil in the budgeting forecast in the world for all of them, not just up here schools, not just schools in general. So, this is not uncommon. And so, we just try to read the tea leaves with all these variables, and come to you in June with what we think is our, our best guess in many cases.
Well, we know we have the best possible.
A great tracker.
So continuing on with the state, um, obviously, as Matt just mentioned, I'm an, end of a Democratic track back to, so the House split to Republican, so should be a little bit more interesting to see priorities in the House versus Senate versus Governor. Um, I'm sure they're all going to be kind of doing one of these. Um, age mismatch is still, it's out there. Um, lack of younger individuals available to replace workers, lost to retirement. I read a interesting article the other day, it said, over the next twenty years, an average of ten thousand more individuals will reach retirement age each year, then will reach working age. So that's a little bit, you were, a little bit interesting in the state.
All you retired folks out there, get back to work. Slough it off. We got bills to pay.
Um, the pupil trend, that's no surprise, our continuing declining enrollment, that is a state, it's a state issue. Um, COVID dollars are gone, we said, we've been saying that, they're gone. Uh, we, up here schools had approximately nine million. Um, but we're starting to see that historical trend revert, revert back to the revenue stream. So, um, we'll see kind of in the next budget cycles coming up, where we'll see these kind of one-time dollars, uh, let's see, customers going away, but, you know, you never know. Uh, the state, the state education budget still remains play. Um, we do not have as surprising as it sounds going into February. I still have no idea. I have a general idea, but I don't have a final revenue number. I've got, um, there's talks out there that there's some continuing revolutions, that the governor's going to put some more safety in mental health out there, um, but not knowing until maybe April. We're still not sure, um, House Bill sixty fifty-eight's healthcare card caps is seven percent. Is that on the table? If it is, that's about a million point, one point one million dollar budget impact. Um, so just kind of not knowing where these variables stand, it makes it a little bit difficult. You know, going into February, we have a final amendment here in June. Um, so just constantly watching, watching emails, watching listservs. Um, does anyone have any idea, you know, where we're heading? So, like I said, still waiting on those kind of final revenue numbers. Like I said, we'll see, we're hopeful, so there's some spring, something else. This next slide is getting into kind of, just kind of laying the groundwork of how we, um, come up with our revenue. So it's pretty simple, so we take our number of students, and our times, our per pupil foundation allowances gives us how we get our annual, um, district revenue. So we take forty-three oh-six, um, students multiplied by ninety-six oh-eight, which is our current foundational allowance. We get about forty-one point three million. We need next year about four hundred dollar minimum increase in foundational allowance uh, for twenty-five, twenty-six to maintain current year funding. Uh, with that, that's about the loss of one hundred and seventy-two students. This chart shows, um, kind of statewide where we are with pupil membership. You can see in two thousand and three, we hit our peak, um, but we're slowly declining. So you can see at a statewide, um, like I said earlier, seventy percent of the districts are experiencing pupil decline, um, pupil decline. So we're not the only ones out there, a lot of states are suffering from that. So this slide, we recently- So this slide, we recently did some new people enrollment projections, and we contracted with a company. He is a retired professor at Michigan State, and he's a pretty, pretty interesting guy, he's about eighty years old. And loves to have conversations with youth at mission, and has done some recent people projections, I just got.
So he's eighty years old, still working?
Yes. So retirement is a
A model, a model.
You know, before we, before I put, I should have put this graph out here, but you know, prior, prior budget cycles, we always thought we would see a level off of about four thousand students. This graph is now showing us that that is not the case, that is not going to be what's happening. So as we stand today, we're at four thousand one hundred twenty-one kids. We have been averaging between most likely sort of green line and the blended population of red. So you can see down in twenty-nine and thirty, you know, from a low of thirty-three hundred kids to between thirty-six and thirty-seven kids. Thousand, I'm sorry, where previous projections, we were seeing kind of that four thousand start to level off. This slide is just an enrollment summary from the state from October to October. So you can see in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, we have about four thousand one hundred twenty-one pupils, and that just fall out. So when we talk about enrollment and talk about for a budgeting standpoint, Mark and I like to use what we call blended count. So blended takes ninety percent of your fall and ten percent of your spring count to get your FTE. Michelle and Kim like to use more for instruction allocations, they're going off of more fall counts. But you can see from twenty, Seattle landscaping has changed the district since twenty fourteen to twenty fifteen, we're at fifty, fifty-four, fifty-four hundred students, and today we're at forty-one hundred. So over a ten-year span, we've lost about thirteen hundred kids. And then in twenty-four and twenty-five, you can see that one hundred and seventy-two.
So still, we jumped to COVID time, that we haven't really improved having those students who have drugs to leave public education.
So that's a pretty, pretty consistent experience, about seventy percent of schools, this was across state, traditional schools, this was across state experience, it's similar dip. And it's just mainly with lack of the virtual and at-home learning. Much of that, as parents experienced it, remain, remain in a virtual setting, chose alternative methods of to teach us. And so it, you know, it's, in Michigan in particular, we're one of a few declining population states in the capital of the US as well. So as the three are experiencing constriction for a certain period of time, families are leaving the state of Michigan to find work elsewhere. So we're seeing a lot of migration because of remote work into more temper climates. So as you have workers who did not return to the workplace following COVID, and they work from home. I was living in Michigan, and you can live in Georgia, or Florida, or Tennessee, or Carolina, or Texas. And there's a lot of data now to show us that a super majority of folks who left the state of Michigan, Ohio, Wisconsin, Vienna, as a result of kind of the remote work push in the midst of COVID, have migrated to southern states to work. I've got a number of my family that has affected. So it's, it's a combination of didn't leave Michigan, but hey, this virtual learning thing wasn't that bad. We're not going back to traditional education, or work is elsewhere, in a different state, or like work remotely from anywhere. You walk outside and then you look today, I mean, we're in Michigan. So all those variables do add up to this constriction that we continue to see, and probably why the projection, Mark, who was the last sample projection we did before this year? Seventeen, seventeen eighteen?
Seventeen eighteen going into the region.
So pre-COVID, we were on a trajectory to level off early in four thousand, you see that, that dip in twenty twenty-one of four hundred students, almost more than ten. And then we've seen that we continue to decline as a result of that. So that was a, that was a difficult thing for, for, for Austin to appear for more than one region, obviously.
State lost forty-five thousand kids every year.
Forty-five thousand students off K-12 rolls in one school year is remarkable.
Do we have any data to see if private schools or
Charters?
Yeah, so Can they give any all of a sudden charter schools have increased like in the last two years or three years? Does he have recoops on our kids?
Well, just the local that's happened, right? Michigan Kelly, no longer, no longer on K-8s, and St. Paul is, is declining significantly. You know, and charters, many of which are public schools, right? So oftentimes counted in the state by, so
Yeah, there's about six thousand a year for K-12 public decrease, been that way for the last three or four years, and the charters go up by about a thousand. So that's, with that saying, it's really just a shift there, they're not growing, they're not taking them all away.
Pick that up after COVID because of the situation, there was a migration happen, so.
We really can't track parochial, there's no way. That's part of the problem, you know, homeschool, parochial, you try that, you can't, they're not registered with the state, you know, like the numbers there. So, but I have heard that parochial has increased somewhat across the metropolitan state, you know, COVID necessarily aren't that whole.
Well, and you've got other states like Indiana that are, that are purely non-teacher states, right? So I can take, I can take my money and apply it to a private school education, right? You don't have that in other, in other areas. So the variables, when you try to compare states, it gets a little wonky because there's just too many, too many moving parts. So to Mark's point, it's easier for us to compare apples to apples, right? Is private school enrollment increasing or decreasing, is not public charters increasing or decreasing, or traditional K-12 sit in the mix of that. It's why we started programs like a homeschool partnership, and that was, you know, over a decade ago now, because we kind of saw the writing on the wall. Listen, we've got, you know, at any given time, at that point, the state was identifying a thousand homeschool families in Lakeview County. Right? So it was like, okay, we know virtual learning's on the horizon, we know we're in a competitive marketplace, not just against private and charter, but also against neighboring public school districts. And we have a thousand, possibly thousands of kids in our backyard who aren't choosing privates, charters, or K, or traditional K-12. How do we tap into that market, right? So I hesitate to think where we'd be without some of the virtual learning opportunities, homeschool partnership, those numbers would be significantly worse. Right? So it doesn't, it didn't solve our problem, but it certainly positions us to at least have an existing mechanism that if people want to continue to leave public ed writ large, we have places where they can land. And this happens a lot, we'll say, it's a frustration with something that happened in one of our traditional buildings. Say, I'm homeschooling my kids, and we'll say, well, we have a homeschool program, and you should call them, right? So we, we built in some of these mechanisms to catch some of the dissatisfaction or leaving because of a variety of reasons, right?
I think what I struggle with though is that if everyone's losing numbers, right, we're losing students statewide, the pool of the money should go higher for students if you're, you have less students, I mean, you know, less students to spread it. Unfortunately, I realize they're doing other things with our money, so I get it, but it's not fair, right? In reality, we should be getting relatively larger increases because you're talking, right, we have a million dollars, say a million dollars, you know, a hundred students, well, if you're going down to eighty students, it's more per student, right, based on the same pool.
We have a few mechanisms, Lisa, that's a, that's a really good observation, because, and again, it's why it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to compare. Well, in New York, they do this, in Indiana, they do this, in Texas, they do that, in Michigan, a couple things. Your dedicated K-12 fund, you may or not like this, because
I know, I know.
Base funding community college and university education, which was never designed to do, right? And, and, and secondly,
So it's going to tap into other, I mean, other brothers.
Yeah, and it's used for other purposes, right? So that dedicated fund post Prop A is a lot less dedicated than it used to be, right? And you have a Department of Education, Department of Education, who is incentivizing the, the mechanisms of digging districts for FTE, right, as opposed to figuring out ways to support programs like the here, who are trying to educate a variety of, of people. So it is a regulatory agency who, much like in kind of an audit perspective, is a feather in the cap to say, well, you know, you said you had this many kids in the role, but I'm going to take twenty FTE away from you, right? Because that is, that is a problem, that, that posture that they take, which is, essentially pits the Department of Education, which is supposed to be the chief educational institution in the state, against local school districts, and disincentivizes the peer community schools of the world. Because our auditor, we're lucky, has embraced the fact that we chose to educate homeschool families. And the people accounting component of that is extremely complex, right? And they get a lot of pushback because those families didn't just simply choose LCS traditional education. And so they'll run those folks through the wringer, making us prove that those students are actually pupils that are being, that whose education in part is being facilitated by LCS, and we generate that, that revenue. So now we're not only fighting to keep our kids from going to neighboring school districts, we're not only fighting to attract homeschool families here, but now I've got to fight the Department of Education and the auditors they hire to to disincentivize me to do that. It's a lot of work to do, it'd be a lot easier if we just had buildings with four walls, and the kids were there from seven-thirty to two-thirty, and they had their attendant sheets like the old days, and as long as they attended the right number of hours, the right number of days. So it's a very antiquated system of determining how much districts get paid for putting buses seats, when every single learning coach that you hear from, every principal, curriculum director, hopefully superintendent that's worth their salt, will say, you know, learning isn't necessarily determined by the number of hours you sit in a chair in a building. Learning can happen in a variety of ways, before school, after school, online, face-to-face, in a group, at the day, full day. But the structure that provides the revenue for us basically rewards the traditional model of education, X number of hours in a chair at school, as opposed to the myriad of ways we're trying to educate kids. So that is a long-winded way of saying you are fighting an uphill structural battle. When, so districts that are trying to innovate and do things that are out of the box, in terms of, I'm not going to just put you in front of the six teachers every day, all day, with some kids that's grateful, and that works, and they love it, and some kids, it doesn't work. Right? So when you talk about things like co-op programs, flexible scheduling, early release, getting kids into the virtual programming, what, we fought some very significant battles at the outset of LVP and the homeschool partnership and virtual learning, and they came after us saying, these kids aren't here, they don't count, you don't get the money. Meanwhile, I was paying for a building and buying computers and paying teachers, and to do that, we knew we were doing it the right way. We knew we, our auditing, internal auditing was accurate. So that, that, that's, there's a lot going on here, it's not just multiplying the number of kids times the student, you know, the, the foundation allowance, and then saying, well, you get all this money. Well, you know, I'm making excuses, but those are, that's a global context for our viewing audience.
Hard to lose what we predicted, and coming out of COVID was the hard thing, because it was trying to figure out where everyone was, society's viewpoints, trust, health issue, I mean, it wasn't just a school issue, it was a society thing, where I'll guess if you did a hundred, you're right, when you look at this, we're somewhere between a hundred and thirty, a hundred and fifty on average for ten years, and that's it. Now, that kind of correlates with the declining birth enrollment statewide, that's been going on for two-plus decades since the millennium, right? And doesn't show any sign of relief. But it's one of those things where there's a lot more competition today. Matt mentioned, we've got a plethora, it's not solving it, but it's helping it, we also do schools of choice, we, we lose kids, but we gain kids, right? So all of it together helps us maintain, so we're not at the low, but we stay somewhere between the middle to the best, you know, best case scenario.
Sorry for that. No, you're right. Okay, so this next slide is a little bit complicated, but I promise you it's not that complicated. So twenty-three, twenty-four is the, on the column on the left. So what we're trying to show is this school year funding change, what happened this year? Foundation allowance last year, we got about four hundred fifty-eight per pupil. You bring in, um, let me take a step back. So then, last year, in thirty-one double A money, which is our student mental health and safety, we got about a million dollars, million things. Take a step forward this year, we said, no foundation allowance. But what happened this year is we lost one hundred and seventy-two students. So starting the year, we start out with one point seven million dollars in the hole, after they tell us we're not getting foundation allowance. Then what they propose is we're going to get this new hundred, one forty-seven A four money, which is funneled through the retirement system. So it's what they call a UAAL reduction, which reduces the amount of the employers paid to the retirement system to offset that foundation allowance increase. That intention is to support student mental health, school safety, educated workforce, academic interventions. So what they did is kind of did a flip-flop. So if we take negative one point seven, we got one point five, we're still short. We got a little bit thirty-one double A money again this year, I think it was about seventy-eight thousand. Like I said, we're hopeful in the spring to get some more thirty-one double A money, there's talks that it's still out there, they're still working through supplemental bills. Hopefully, we will see it. But then, but back to my previous slide, twenty-five, twenty-six, to maintain that same level of funding, we need about four hundred per pupil. This next slide is just showing prior year versus current year revenue and expense, so this is more from just accounting perspective. Twenty twenty-four is a, probably one of our top years of performing revenue of sixty-five million, offset by sixty-two million in expense. So on the next slide, you'll see about a two point seven million dollar fund balance increase, and that's by the sixty-five and sixty-two. Fast forward to where we stand today, only what we know, what we can project, we're about operating revenue of fifty-seven million, but our expenses are about sixty-three. And all that is, is when you take your prior year versus your current year, it's a loss of asset, we had three million dollars in asset last year. We know we lost one hundred and seventy students, about a hundred, one point seven million. We had a big swing in the one-time categorical, so last year, you heard us talk about thirty-one double A, we had a twenty-seven L, which is the L educator compensation program, which was going to be given to us to help offset set costs in contracts. And then twenty-three G, which is my kids back on trap, and we're a curriculum grant. Some salaries built into that, so that's just kind of the big ticket items, why you see such a difference in revenue from year to year. This slide I like to hit on, I think this is really important, this just shows kind of how the budget is from an operating standpoint. So when we talk about our budget, we say that eighty-five percent of our budget comes from salaries, benefits, and support services. So that's people support services, mental health support services, psychologists, speech. So eighty-five percent of our budget is tied up in salaries. So it's really hard for us to, you know, you take supplies and materials, that's five percent of our budget. You know, capital holiday is three point eight, so I just, I really just want to show that, you know, the majority of the budget is tied up in salaries and benefits.
So meaning, you know, we can work harder to get better, lease agreements with our guiding machines, we can work to resource pricing for fuel. We can, you know, really, you know, sharpen the pencil on a variety of these operating costs, but, you know, the value of your book in terms of where is the real need, the taste of, of, of all school districts, right?
This just shows our fund balance history, so starting from twenty fifteen all the way up to twenty twenty-four, and you can see from my last slide, when I said we add about two point seven million dollars of fund balance. But I want to, really want to point out, from twenty fifteen to twenty-four, we've been consistently adding to fund balance. So I think that's a really important item to highlight, that, you know, as a district So I think that's a really important item to highlight that, you know, as a district, we have been doing a good job at, you know, budgeting and projecting and saving as much as we can. Obviously it kind of correlates with fund balance. The, the two point seven, I just wanna point out, that was a lot of, number one, we have a lot of carryover from thirty-one A, which is our at-risk people funding. Um, and that just continues to carry over from year to year. Um, we have a lot of the categorical, like I said, we maintain, um, you know, staff that way, but we added some categorical one-time funding. We have offset transportation revenue that helped us, um, they gave kind of one-time funding. And I think it's, I see it this year, um, kind of preliminary forecast is kind of, is, you know, in this current year budget anyways, but, um, rule districts. It helps offset that transportation cost. You know, you take a district like LaPierre that's gotta travel, I don't know, Mark, what is it? Two hundred, two hundred square miles or plus?
Two hundred and twenty-five square miles.
Yeah. And then you take a little Frasier that's gotta go, you know, twenty-five square miles. That's huge for a district for LaPierre that's got two million dollars in transportation costs. But I've got Frasier, that's twenty-five thousand dollars in transportation costs. So that transportation cost was established and they did a huge study on it to help support those districts. Um, like I said, we've had the educator compensation, um, that was to help offset step, some employment costs. Um, and then the enrollment stabilization fund. So that was to help districts that are struggling with declining enrollment and kind of provide that help and support needed to kind of help them grow. This just shows the, uh, school aid balance sheet, so starting with twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, it appears to be in twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, there's gonna be funding there. It's about a billion dollars, uh, revenue or increase to foundation allowance, um, fund balance. So, and then like I said previous, about a two to two and a half percent revenue roll in the school aid fund from year to year. So that's promising. Um, like I said, there's, governor released her budget today, so we're seeing some hopeful, hopeful signs. But, you know, like I said, it changes day by day, you never know. So now what? So what? What we're gonna continue to do is we're gonna continue to move forward as usual, developing a budget, what the rule is known. Hopefully gotta continue finishing this year's budget before we can move over to next year. Um, educational sessions with bargaining unit leaders of changing financial picture, which we have meeting tomorrow to kind of go over what we talked about tonight. Uh, educational sessions with board and subcommittees and organizational impact. We're going to still await further legislative developments that could have budgetary implement or impact, which hopefully we'll know more. Uh, watch the May revenue conference like we always do. We watch January and May, see if there's any changes in revenue, um, and revise state budgetary projections. And then hopefully come to you guys in June. Well, hopefully we will be coming to you in June, um, to about that award budget.
So can you share some of the wonders that came out of the governors? I, I haven't seen any of it, so.
You want the good story or you want the bad story?
I, I know it's gonna be bad, just the world's.
So the good story is the two hundred and ninety-two dollars per student increase. The bad news is there's two billion dollars there, they could give us over eleven hundred dollars per student increase. But it's a matter of priorities, so we're somewhere priorities. One of the good articles, go to Free Press, not that I work for, or anything, but Free Press got a pretty good summary of, for speech, digest it. So now, back to Lisa's question and comment. So currently, school aid funds about, it's in the seven hundred million for colleges and community colleges. And that's split between the two. It gets really confusing because there's Indian treaties by law and everything, it's gotta be made up. And if you read the detail, you'll get lost quick. But currently, eighteen million is in our school aid for community colleges. Total community colleges gets funded by the state of general fund, four hundred and sixty-some million this year. It's going up to four hundred and ninety-six million next year, a hundred percent come out of school aid fund. That's another three hundred and eighty-two dollars per student we could get if we weren't funding colleges. They also get to raise tuition no more than four percent. If they stay within four percent, they'll get the four hundred and ninety-six million dollars. But there's other things in there.
Right, free, but that is, that is beyond prediction. Having two children by three in college, you know, one in which, which is a solid manual loss. The fact that they can increase their revenue and stay within the formula, be above fossil living increase, right? Parents are paying more, we're taking more money out of our local community, the money that was designed for local people construction, the university and college. It is a major, major problem.
And the governor's got other priorities that, you know, the preschool and stuff that substantially, there's money in there, but it can't sustain it. If you remember in the last two years, me talking about free reduced lunch being totally free. This year, it's a hundred and sixty million off the top of the school aid fund. It raises to two hundred million next year. That's because it's a hundred percent off of the state, no more federal dollars that backfill that like it did during the COVID years. Because that's what the state was using, it was COVID dollars initially. And so that one's growing at about forty to fifty million a year. So, you know, school aid's twenty-one billion, it sounds impressive. At two percent growth, it doesn't take a lot of these line items to grow very quickly. That consumes any of the two to two and a half percent growth of school aid fund. And Erica glossed over very quickly, this is all good stuff. We have so many blips on the radar that we're worried about. It's the national, it's state, it's things that you've heard me talk about before. Electification, right? And it's not to be political, but electrification changes the whole state, tax system. So there's, I think it's twenty or sixty million that's in the, per budget for school aid to look at alternative ways and to do a pilot to charge tolls on our roads to start replacing either gas tax or to get away from fossil fuels. So, so much of this is intermixed. What we try to do is unravel these shells and try to guess, as Matt said earlier, in America, where are we gonna land? What's it mean for us in K-12? That's all, that's all we need to get to. We know it's foundation allowance, but we also know healthcare, you know, our retirement system. Eleven more years, twenty thirty-six, it'll be fully funded. That's four billion dollars that no longer will be spent to the retirement system to make the pension system. Do you think schools are gonna get all four billion dollars? That'll solve every problem we've got, frankly, in five hundred and fifty school districts. Now, what we're seeing is a slow bleed as you read the detail. But the general public doesn't understand that. It's hard for our school folks to understand it because we're trying to keep track of where they're moving the money and what it's being used for. The soundbites sound great, should have funded the highest ever in schools. So I just did a little calculation there. So twenty-one, twenty-two, based on what you asked, uh, summer, five hundred and eighty million dollars increase in foundation allowance, right? It's the highest we ever had, mind, thirty-some years. Twenty-two, twenty-three, four hundred and fifty dollars. So we found it went from eighty-one hundred to eighty-seven hundred dollars in fiscal twenty-two to ninety-one fifty in fiscal twenty-three. In fiscal twenty-four, another four hundred and fifty-eight dollars increase. So, you know, fifteen hundred dollar increase in three years. Which, Erica, if you go back two slides, please. Nope, the foundation one. So that's why our fund equity has grown, right? We got higher than what we, even as a declining enrollment district, we got higher than what we need. Okay? Now, this year it's zero. Now, the hyperbole is, it's not zero, we're being fully funded because of the lower the retirement cost and this and that. Yeah, but we had our health and safety, so now we gotta make a choice. Do we spend it on health and safety? Do we spend it on foundation allowance? Do we, where do we spend it? They're giving us money, but they're not giving us the same amount of money. We're getting pennies on the dollar. And we've become the bad guy if we cut mental health, if we cut safety, or if we put foundation allowance for a district and they're gonna say, well, we gave you money. You gave me some money, but you didn't give me the same amount of money you gave me last year. And so you're right, I think you mentioned something, there's gonna be a lot of movement in the next five months. You know, Matt, Kim and I, Erica were talking earlier in the last few weeks. Every day this is gonna change, right? Michelle was in a panic as Erica said. We're all gonna be in panic every time because some of this means a lot of money. If the federal budgets, IDA, Title I gets cut. So IDA, fine, title. But when it comes to IDA, we have to fund special needs before we fund general aid kids. And so if we lose money there, that's general fund dollars, gotta backfill that. You can cut the service, but if we're in violation of IEP, that's not gonna fly, that'll cost us lawsuit. So that's the backside of this, that's very complicated. We do this, and I steal Kim's thunder here, we do this as education process because it is so complicated for everyone. And it means something at the bargaining table, it means something for everyday employee when they don't hear or they don't see this. And we don't expect everyone to digest it, but you have to understand there's more going on than what you're gonna read in the press or you're gonna hear the soundbites from whoever's trying to make it sound like they're doing something good for us. Now, zero this year and then three ninety-two next year, I'll just take the average. That's still well below what we need just to fill our declining enrollment. Two-thirds of districts are declining enrollment. So we're no different than two-thirds of the school districts in the state. Try to figure out how we live another day. Hence, for those that have been on the board, Lisa, she knows this, we've talked about it. There was a day, we used to do three-year budgets. Matt and I remember that, I think Kim remembers it even though she wasn't, I don't think on the administration side of that. We haven't done three-year budgets for twenty years because you can't. You can't figure out a year, let alone two years. It's all, and so that makes it difficult because we don't wanna sound like the sky is falling because you don't wanna overpredict the bad stuff and that comes up bad. You don't wanna predict how good it is and then it's bad because we can't cut in the middle of the year. I'm scared this year, you heard me say this last year, why? We're in, are now going into our eighth month. We still don't know what school aid is for this year. This reminds me of the grand home days when we got prorated in the eleventh month in May and they took foundation allowance away from us. We can't make cuts in the eleventh month, folks. We've paid eleven twelfth of salaries, as Matt said, we've, we've incurred our heat and the lights and all of our costs and fuel for the buses. There is no cutting. It's gonna go into the next year's or cuts, which makes it very hard that late. So it's becoming very difficult to figure this out with any certainty without having too conservative or too aggressive.
For sure. But to the, to your point, and I'm not trying to discredit fund balance, but we have built up a decent saving if we have to, we can tap in a little bit. I mean, you know, there, there is some room there.
And that's exactly.
So that's why we did it.
And we, and we have that.
Right, and we have, right.
And we have.
You understand, we, we aren't in dire straits or anything because we do have a sixteen point five percent, right? So I mean, that's kind of what we do, right? If not necessarily.
It is.
Because I do say that, you know, our purpose is education. We can have a healthy fund balance, but we need to make sure that our kids are getting what they need, right?
For sure. Yeah, I, I really understand that pain because every placement you just described, I'm living also in the world of the audit industry.
Right.
Every single day.
Exactly.
And I just wish we didn't have to do a five-year budget. Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Because we're going through all of our budget and forecasting. And, um, it's painful. I might first of all, I might borrow yours because mine's definitely broken. Um, but yeah, it's, it's very, it's gonna be very.
Matt said, we have done a good job on our enrollment, yes, because that's what it is. It's educating, yes, it's based on trends, it's based on indices in society and what's going on. We've been very, very good. It's getting back to the numbers of the routines, which, you know, is that outmigration, is that? Who knows? Probably a little bit of everything. Because we don't, as Lisa said, man, available, all the data points to get to. What we know is it's not changing. There's nothing major, what Fred and Erica kind of glossed over, so I'll take the opportunity. Fred spends hours asking us detailed questions and even expanded his time, including Michelle and others, trying to understand, you know, things that you won't find in demographics. What's going on with building codes? What's going on at homes? What's going on at industries? What's going on with trends in the general geographic area, not just in LaPierre County, the Genesee or whatever? So you may look for some tendencies to get some in-migration of students that you don't have today in this projection. So there's a lot more scientific behind these numbers, but we've used him twice before and the numbers are purely very accurate where five years later, we're landing what Fred's predictions were within that zone of the red, green and yellow lines. So we got confidence, we're gonna be somewhere in there. We just hope it's higher on the, on the green and not down towards the red.
I have a question. I was just gonna add something. You know, last year we talked about, you know, governors that help the Senate and kind of where, you know, they all lay out their budgets, you know, February, March, April. You know, last year was all two to three hundred dollar increases for foundation allowance. And they lay on us, nope, you're not getting anything. So it's really kind of early, when I talked to Mark today, I'm like, Mark, I did not buy a three hundred and ninety-two dollar increase based on what happened last year. I mean, they let us, we were doing, we were doing old projections. Every district in Michigan was banking on two to three hundred dollar per pupil foundation. We got zero. So it's like you kind of lose kind of, you don't lose trust, but it's like, well, how am I supposed to do a, you know, forecast for next year when all along last year and previous years, you're saying two to three hundred or, you know, whatever foundation money, you say, no, you're not getting anything. And we didn't get anything, we had no idea about this, you know, shipping of retirement. So it's just kind of like, you know, kind of take it for what it's worth and we'll know more and hopefully sooner than later. But just continue to monitor and it's the best we can do. You have any questions?
I have a question. And this doesn't really impact the budget, it's just more of the numbers. And I see Shad is here, so I'm glad that Shad is here. Uh, maybe he can come.
We're all glad.
Oh, happy Shad's here. So with the projection of the student enrollment and declaiment, does that impact the division that we will be in with the sports? And we're currently D-one per hour.
Yeah, so there's a couple of different variations of it. So, um, we will always be D-one for every sport except for football. And swim, swim's a sport because the number of schools that offer swim, we are in Division Two for our boys swim program because swim programs continue to decrease in, in numbers, especially on the boy's side, just because there's so many sports that are in the winter, such as basketball, wrestling, that take away from, uh, competitive swim. So we, last year, we're in Division Two for, for swim, which is probably appropriate for our swim program or what we have, because we don't have a pool in our home building. We have a great relationship with the rec center, but it's just, it's a, it's a, um, program that, um, we just, we don't excel at necessarily. Um, you know, our kids have a great time doing it and they, they work really hard, but just compared to Dow, which is in our conference in our Division Two program, they, you know, they have some really good teams there. For football, I did some early projections last week. Um, we have been currently since the twenty-four, twenty-fifteen school year, we were Division One. We were, I think, the eleventh largest high school at that time of Division One when we had twenty-one hundred kids in our nine twelve setting. I did some projections, just rough, of where we would be. And this includes our nine twelve buildings, it includes our alternative kids and it also includes our LVP kids because we wanna be able to tap into any kid that is a part of our school district to be able to play in that sport. Um, our number would be around thirteen eighty-four. Currently, we are at fourteen sixty is the number that we, we gave to the state last year. And we were the third smallest Division One school last year. Uh, the cutoff was at fourteen forty-seven. Um, so the school that we played Lakeview was the first game of the year, they were right below us. They were at fourteen fifty-nine. And then Southfield, uh, which is a, they have combined school districts too. Uh, they had previously won, they won the state title last year as probably be one of the smallest schools in Division One. They were at fourteen forty-eight. So MISA looks at trying to balance out within the eight divisions of eleven-man football, anywhere from sixty-four to sixty-two schools per division. So in Division One, we're at sixty-two teams in Division One. Um, if that number were to hold true in other schools, I mean, other schools are gonna move up and down, right? If that were to hold true, we would be the eighth largest Division Two school next year. So I mean, we would drop significantly. We were, um, so we're the sixtieth largest Division One school. The year previous to that, we were around the forty-seventh largest. So we dropped thirteen spots from the twenty-three, twenty-four school year to, or the twenty-two, twenty-three to the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So I project, depending on where schools go in the next week, because we're gonna count it next, it goes on next week's count, on Wednesday's count. I have to turn our report into the state. Um, and then we will find out in April, what, where they, once they get all those numbers and figure out where it is, I, I could forecast, I foresee us, if it's not next year, it could be the next, the following year, especially with, you know, this trend right here that Erica showed, of being Division Two. of being Division Two for football. And then still being Division One for everything else because that threshold number is like eight eighty-five. So like for basketball, any school that's above eight eighty-five is playing in the Division One rounds and then what? Long story, but.
Thank you, Shad, I appreciate, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, no.
You know, seeing the numbers.
I'm looking at that all the time.
Conferences and for the kids and we're.
Yep.
Other questions? Thank you, Erica, you did a really nice job. That brings us to our action items for this evening. So we have our consent grouping approval of regular minutes in January days, twenty twenty-five. Overnight field trip for LHS K-12, which is on the mantle in Michigan, February twenty-first to twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. And then we have a second reading and adoption of the board policies. Policy twelve twenty, employment superintendent. Policy twelve forty, evaluation of the superintendent. Policy thirty-one twenty, employment of precautional staff. Policy thirty-one twenty-four, employment contract. Policy forty-one twenty, employment of support staff. And then policy eighty-three twenty-one, criminal justice, information security. Are there any items anyone wishes to have removed from the consent group? Okay, I'm hearing none, so can I get a motion?
I make a motion that reading of the minutes be waived and consent agenda items be approved as presented.
Or.
I have a motion and a support. Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mrs. LeBarre?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Van Wangeren?
Aye.
Ms. Cutler says aye. Motion carries. Okay, then we have twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six countywide pre-labor day start waiver.
I'll make a motion for a resolution for the twenty-five, twenty-six countywide pre-labor days to start labor be approved as presented. Support.
I have a motion and a support. Any discussion on the motion? Here we go. Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mrs. LeBarre?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Van Wangeren?
Aye.
Ms. Cutler says aye. Motion carries. Then we have consideration of naming the weight room at LHS.
I move that the weight room at LHS be Michael L. Smith Performance Center, AKA Tri-City. Support.
I have a motion and a support. Any discussion on the motion? Here we go. Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mrs. LeBarre?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Van Wangeren?
Aye.
Ms. Cutler says aye. Motion carries. And then we have bit pack number six, pack addition and renovation fighter suppression.
I'll make a motion that bit pack number six, pack addition and renovation fighter suppression be awarded to Regular Fighter Protection Incorporated for a fighter suppression system, current amount not to exceed three hundred thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars. Ultimate one locker room renovations, current amount not to exceed two thousand five hundred eighty dollars. Voluntary ultimate one add zone sectional valves, current amount not to exceed sixty-nine thousand two hundred ninety dollars. Voluntary ultimate two stand pipe for stage, current amount not to exceed forty-five thousand two hundred ninety dollars. And voluntary ultimate four hydraulic populations for building, current amount not to exceed ninety-three thousand eight hundred forty-five dollars for grand total amount not to exceed five hundred eleven thousand nine hundred ninety dollars. Support.
I have a motion and a support. Any discussion on the motion? Here we go. Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mrs. LeBarre?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Van Wangeren?
Aye.
Ms. Cutler says aye. Motion carries. And then lastly, we have the change order number twenty-two, the pack number six, LHS temperature controls.
I'll make a motion that Tri-City controls be issued an additional amount not to exceed a hundred and forty-one thousand three hundred eighteen dollars to provide and install additional temperature controls at LHS.
I have a motion and a support. Any discussion on the motion? Here we go. Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mrs. LeBarre?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Van Wangeren?
Aye.
Ms. Cutler says aye. Motion carries. And that brings us to Board Network Communications this evening. Mrs. LeBarre.
Shout out to her, I have something to talk about. All right, I just want to give a shout out to LHS and Dr. Larson and all of the LHS counseling staff for the fast food night that they provided for us last night. It was at the, um, it was at the Litter's, in the library.
Media Center.
How many did you bring?
Media Center.
Thank you. Uh, it was held last night from five to seven, they provided pizza, cookies and water. I don't know if that was the big pull, but it was crowded, there were, every table was filled. We got there shortly after five. There, there was barely one, there was like one table left. I was so happy to see such wonderful participation, the helpers that were there going around making sure that the fast foods were filled out correctly. My first time as a college parent, a kid going to college, and I didn't know half of those numbers meant, and it was really helpful. They didn't make me feel stupid at all. They said, well, this means this, this means that, and it was very reassuring to know that we did it correctly and that there was so much support there to ask questions and to just give different viewpoints from the different colleges that were there. Huge thanks for them. Actually, that is, I, I don't know what the participation was, I know that they had to sign in. I wish Dr. Larson was here so I could ask him what the participation was, but it was phenomenal right off the bat, a clap of the buck. I'm so happy that we provide that opportunity for parents and for kids because it can be scary to, to try and figure those things out, those test reforms or anybody who has filled one out, they're mind-blowing. And it's very high pressure when you're thinking about, my gosh, you just want your kid to go to college, you know, you want to help as best you can. And about the different scholarships that are offered, the counseling staff was just phenomenal. I just really want to express my appreciation and gratitude for us providing that for our students. Thank you so very much.
I just think now they're more simple than they were.
They're easier. Oh, they just to be harder? My idea won't be easier.
I have, uh, I have some phobia. See a therapist about it.
So when they keep on with their uniform, I was like, wow, this is awesome, so. But it is good that they.
It's accommodating, it's not that.
It's just a lot.
Come on, come on.
It's just a lot of effort.
Yeah. They have simplified it quite a bit.
Yeah.
I just want to thank Wyatt and your team, great presentation. Yeah, really enjoyed hearing about it. Again, just appreciate the time you took to come and be with us. Um, I do love tonight's meeting, it is one of my favorite, thank you, Erica. Budget is always on my alley, I'm all willing to talk and I love the number before, so thank you again for great presentation and putting it in place.
Anyone else? And of course, I, I echo the same, like, I honestly, the school building presentation is our favorite. Up everyone, it just reinforces just the great pride of being able to sit up here and work together and just seeing the, the hours of background work that goes into helping our kids be successful is amazing. And I'm impressed that every single time I was like, what else can they come to us and share that they haven't done already? Or how you've improved it or tweaked it, um, just, I didn't say just keep doing what you're doing, it's phenomenal. I really do want to go back to school to be, like, you go, okay, I think I could do a really good job. And then Erica, you did a really nice job, you, um, very, very well prepared. You really had the information we needed to kind of kick off this cycle. I know it's going to be challenging, but I think it's only been challenging since COVID. Why relax now, really? I don't know, I don't do relaxing, so. But anyways, appreciate the work that's going to be put into place the next several months by, by everybody because it's going to take a collective team to get us to where we need to have a balanced budget. With that, I will turn now to you, Superintendent Madri.
Yeah, great job, Erica, great job, Wyatt and team.
Motion to adjourn. Support.
Oh, that was so quick. I, I, I'm in such shock right now.
Pipe it out, Madam President.
Dr. Novak?
Dr. Novak.
Hi.
Sorry, Mary.
That's okay. Mrs. LeBarre?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Van Wangeren?
Aye.
Ms. Cutler says aye.